Okay, is everyone ready?
Yep.
Okay, well, good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting for Thursday, April 9th, 2020. We'll start with the Fudge of Allegiance. Nice. That's where I believe this.
Through this flag.
The states of America.
Of the United States of America.
Republic for which is.
To the republic.
One nation.
One nation, God indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll do the roll call, please.
Ms. Atkins. Here. Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Your Abbo Osley.
Here.
Mr. Brand.
Here.
Ms. Goodelia.
Here.
Mr. Sternad.
Thank you. At this time, we will have our regular moment of silence. Okay, thank you. So again, welcome to everyone to the meeting. Welcome to all the participants on city council as well as the city staff and all the members of the public who are joining us for this meeting. This is an unusual situation. I'm glad that we're able to continue having our meetings and continuing the business of the city under these difficult circumstances and I appreciate everyone's patience, understanding and cooperation as we work through this process. We may need to have our meetings in this way for a little while. And so this is our first time and we're figuring it out and appreciate everyone's understanding and patience. I will I will have the city clerk just remind us of how this is going to work in terms of making motions, voting and the public asking questions that they're having.
So for anyone who wishes to make a comment during the public forum or during public hearings, there should be a Q and A button at the bottom of your screen. And you'll just use that to enter any comments or questions. I will be monitoring those and will state them when they come through.
Okay. And then the participants will be able to indicate when they have a question and then they'll be called upon. So please wait to be called upon to make your comment. And everyone will have a fair chance to heard and to ask questions if needed. So the first thing on our agenda is a public forum, which is our normal time that we hear from the public on any item that is on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. And so if any members of the public have any questions on any item on the agenda that is not part of a public hearing, this would be the time to make to make that known and to ask the question in the same way as the city clerk indicated. And we may have received them ahead of time also. Did you receive any, Rachel?
We did not receive any ahead of time and I don't see any coming through in the Q and A box.
Okay, we might just wait about 30 seconds or so to give people an opportunity to do that if they want to. Anything?
Hope I haven't gotten anything.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Mr. Sternad.
Yes, your honor, at this time, I would motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A1 through F4. This will be resolutions 28351 through 28367 with a a resolution number 28367 to correct the address to 925 11th Street. This will be a modification to 28367.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by council member Sternad, seconded by council member Goodela. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by council member Goodela to approve the consent agenda including items A1 through F4. 28351 through 28367 with an amendment to correct the typographical error in resolution number 28367. Changing the reference to 10th Street, changing that to 11th Street. Is that clear? Is there any questions? Or any question on this? Okay, if there are no questions or discussion, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Excuse me, your honor.
Yes, sir.
Legal here. One recommendation that I'm going to have, just given the technical difficulties of multiple people are speaking simultaneously. I don't know that it's required, but I am going to recommend that all votes be roll call votes.
Okay.
Just so we have a clear record.
Sure. Well, our plan was to have the regular vote and if there were any no's, we would ask for a roll call vote, but we can certainly do it this way, too.
I think, your honor, just as long as there's something in place to make it clear, I think that'd be acceptable, too.
Okay. Okay, is everyone okay with that? Voting in the normal way and if it's unclear, we can certainly go back and have a roll call vote.
Sure.
Yep.
Rachel, city clerk, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then we'll proceed with the vote. Again, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended the reference from 10th Street to 11th Street in resolution 28367. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, all those opposed, please say no. Hearing no, no's, I believe we have all ayes and the motion is approved. Was that acceptable, Mr. Tang?
Absolutely, your honor.
Okay. Thank you. We will proceed now with the next portion of the consent agenda and I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem, Mr. Jensen.
Correct.
Your honor, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abbo Osley's abstention from voting items A1 through E1, resolutions 28368 through 28371.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abbo Osley's abstention covering items A1 through E1, resolutions 28368 through 28371. Is there any comments or discussion? Hearing none will take a vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda under administrative services. We have two items. Mr. Jensen, you have the first one.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28372 approving 28E agreement between the city of Marion, Medco and Marion Independent School District regarding the community promise home rehabilitation program.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Jensen, seconded by council member Atkins to approve resolution number 28372 approving the 28E agreement between the city of Marion, Medco and Marion Independent School District regarding the community promise home rehabilitation program. I do believe we have Mr. Nick Glue from Medco with us who may want to make a presentation.
Thank you, your honor. I'll just provide a few quick comments for those that are listening to this meeting. The memo that was provided in the packets, I think really does a pretty good job summarizing from a high level what we are seeking to accomplish with this program. It's considering the times we're in, it's exciting to still talk about some big things that we're working on for the future as we plan for the next school year coming up. So we really feel that the framework of this program does just a spectacular job serving as an extension to our existing community promise strategy and program. I outlined what are kind of the easiest identifiable outcomes of this. That's invested investing in deteriorating neighborhoods, equipping our students, our next generation of talents with hands-on experience in the trades, but not just the trades, think other professions. Think about the legal components that go into projects like this. Think about our realtors who will be involved in projects like this. Perhaps civil engineers at times. So it really will encompass professional opportunities beyond just the trades that we know are in high demand. We think there's going to be an outcome that long-term will increase property values, not just of the single properties that we will work on, but hopefully through the neighborhoods that this program will be able to inspire when they see a little TLC invested into some of these deteriorated properties. So there's kind of that inspirational component for neighborhoods in the community as well. So we've been working with your team at the city and the Marion Independent School District as well as even getting some consultation from some team members at the East Central Iowa Council of Governments to really pull the framework of this program together, which is outlined in the memo I've submitted as well as the 28E agreement that is up for your consideration. The 28E outlines the individual roles and responsibilities of each party. But the other thing that's important to really do now is it creates kind of an advisory team that we really need to come alongside us to kind of dig a little bit deeper into refining the actual policies and procedures and how we'll actually do a project as we move forward. So that's really what this agreement tonight, getting in place, will allow us to continue move forward in planning. The Medco Board of Directors will consider this document for approval at our board meeting in a couple of weeks. The Marion Independent School District, it's on the agenda for the 20th of April. So we're really just continuing to move forward and getting all of our partners on board. Again, big picture, our organization will be the entity to really work with everyone but ultimately go out and purchase the property that will focus on a project. We are going to reallocate some of the resources within our revolving loan fund, at least that's our plan for now, to actually provide the capital to go out and acquire these properties. The construction process itself and really figuring out what these projects are will be led by the Marion Independent School District. They have a certified teacher that will essentially be the project manager for each of these. Be responsible for planning, bidding, marketing, really just managing the whole process in collaboration with us. I think Lon outlined in his memo to you all really how we will utilize some LMI dollars that are available through one of our TIP districts. The city's obligated to utilize dollars for some LMI projects. Those dollars will then come alongside our dollars to actually be, in essence, the improvement dollars or some extra costs that we might incur through the process of acquiring and holding the property. So that's where the city's contribution will come in. And then I talked about the advisory team that will really help to provide additional oversight represented from two members of each party of the 28E will have representative on that. And then at the end of the day, to ensure that these dollars, these LMI dollars are actually also not just being invested in LMI neighborhoods but benefiting LMI individuals, we will partner with EC cog to really, they have the expertise to make sure that we're kind of giving these homes in the hands of people that would be benefiting in LMI type individuals. So that's a high-level overview of the program. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just to clarify, when you say LMI, you're talking about low to moderate income?
Correct, thank you, mayor.
Just want to make sure everybody understands the acronym. Any questions for Mr. Glue before we have our council discussion?
Yes. I don't know if you can hear me, but my hand is raised. Do you not see that?
I do see it.
Okay.
You have to get used to looking at that section.
Yeah, no, no problem. I just wanted to make sure I was doing it right.
You have the floor, council member Goodela, please go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to say how much I love, love, love this project. I think it's a great example of public, public, public coming together for the greater good. My only question, and it wasn't clear to me from the background we were provided, it looks like a recurring project that'll continue to get replenished. Is there a schedule of how many we, what the goal is to complete it? Would it be one a year or is it too early to determine that based on the funds that come in? Or what's the future of this program in terms of the ultimate goal?
I guess.
We're gonna, we're gonna walk before we run. So, you know, we're gonna really take it probably one project at a time. The school district only has so many students that they can probably put in this class per state. You know, we're probably going to be careful as far as the first project, the first home that we would acquire. Probably not going to be a property that's about ready to fall over and we need to do a whole new structural review of the project, right? So we might be looking initially for maybe, call it the more low-hanging fruit than necessarily the worst of the worst. But our intent is that this is really a recurring, long-term thing. We have about $110,000 that we would be looking to allocate toward as capital to be used to acquire properties. So, you know, we are probably looking at one at a time. In a perfect world, we would like to be positioned to identify and purchase that first home over the summer so that the project manager, the teacher at Marion Independent can be working to get that project teed up so that students can begin in the fall semester right away to get going on whatever this first project might look like. But to really answer your question, we really see this as an ongoing thing, but especially initially kind of a one-at-a-time approach.
Yeah, that makes good sense. That answers my question. And other than voting yes for this, please let me know how I can support. If you're, like you mentioned, putting together some people behind the scenes to kind of help promote this or work on it or plan it, would love to be involved further if there's an opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Brand, has his name raised, though?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let it be known that I'm abstaining from discussion and voting on this item. That's all.
Okay, any other questions or comments, discussion among the council on this? I think it's an exciting project personally. Really excited to see it, see the results of it. Any questions or discussion for the members of the council? Okay. If there are none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number 28372, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. All those abstaining.
I abstain.
Okay, so we have five ayes and one abstention. The motion is approved. Next one is yours, Mr. Brand.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28373 approving contract with Conference Technologies Incorporated for Council Chambers Audio-Visual Equipment in the amount of $84,221.13.
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28373 approving the contract with Conference Technologies, Inc. for Council Chambers Audio-Visual Equipment in the amount of $84,221.13. Any discussion? And please feel free to ask questions of the staff on this since this meeting doubles as our work session. So on all these, on anything on this agenda. Just wanted to remind people of that. So any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28373, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, all ayes, the motion is approved. Next on our agenda, we have a public hearing regarding the 2020 A Avenue Reconstruction Project. We will have a report on this from the city engineer, Mr. Barcalo.
Yes, mayor, so this is a project that is a complete reconstruction of A Avenue between South 11th and South 15th. It'll be done in two phases so that the Starry Drive will have access from either the east or the west side. We did receive four sealed bids. The low bid was from Rachi Construction. If you can flip to the next slide, Terrell. The four bids that we got there, you can see the low bid was at 93.4% of the engineer's estimate. Work shall commence no later than June 22nd and be completed within 55 working days. There are liquidated damages in the amount of $500 per day if they exceed those number of days.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will take comments from members of the public on this public hearing. Comments either in favor or in opposition of this measure can be emailed to the city clerk at this time. I will ask the city clerk if she's received any prior to the meeting.
I did not receive any prior and I'm not seeing any come through the meeting right now.
Okay, we will just hold for a little bit to give people a chance to do that if they have any comments or questions. Mr. Barcalo, did anyone want to call your office about this item at all?
They did not.
Okay, so you haven't received any comments. We'll note that for the record, please. Okay, so seeing that there are no public comments, we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution. Ms. Goodela.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28374, accepting bids and awarding contract to Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2020 A Avenue Reconstruction Project, NSI, in the amount of $579,842.75.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28374, accepting bids and awarding contract to Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2020 A Avenue Reconstruction Project in the amount of $579,842.75. Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion or comments, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving, approving resolution number 28374, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion has been approved. We have another public hearing right now regarding the 2020 Safe Routes to School Project. Mr. Barcalo, do you have a report on this one, too?
Yes, mayor. So this is a project to build a sidewalk from 14th to 15th Street and eventually extend that sidewalk to become a side path along 15th to the south and then also east on First to connect the schools. So this is just a small portion of the project, what we got a grant for. So it'll be a rapid flashing beacon installed on 15th Street for the kids to cross. And then, Terrell, if you can go to the next slide. We received three bids for this project. The low bid again was from Rachi Construction at $99,806.50, which was 76.8% of the engineer's estimate. Because it did come in so low, we will look at what we can add with the unit prices that we had and come back to city council with a change order. Work shall commence no later than July 6th and be completed within 40 working days. And there are liquidated damages in the amount of $300 per day. In the excess of those days, we are recommending approval.
Okay. At this time, we'll make it available for members of the public to present their comments or questions regarding this measure. We'll ask the city clerk if she's received any comments prior to this time and give people a little bit of time to send in their question if they have it.
I did not receive any comments ahead of time and there's currently no questions being asked.
Okay, we'll wait a few seconds and see what anyone wants to weigh in on this. None?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for everyone's patience on this. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and go to the resolution.
Excuse me, I move to approve resolution number 28375, accepting bids and awarding contract to Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2020 Safe Routes to School Project in the amount of $99,806.50.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28375, accepting bids and awarding the contract to Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2020 Safe Routes to School Project in the amount of $99,806.50. Discussion? I will ask Mr. Barcalo. So you said that the bid came in lower than you expected or lower than the budgeted amount, I guess, and what you expected. But you said you might add some things. What types of things would you add?
So we would extend how much work we actually do with the project funds. So we now have unit prices as part of the bid and so we'll see how far we can extend this project to fill as much of the Safe Routes to School project as we can.
Good, and you mentioned side paths. I just, that it would qualify as a side path. Just want to make sure everybody understands that means if a trail, right? It would be.
Right, it's basically a trail that parallels a street.
Right. Okay, just again, for purposes of having everybody understand the terminology. So any questions or discussion on this resolution number 28375 from the council? Okay, seeing that there are none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number 28375, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved. We have another public hearing at this time regarding the 2020 Cemetery CIPP Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Barcalo, I assume you'll also explain that, echo.
Yep, so this is what's formerly known as our slip lining project. So again, this one, you can see on the map, there's several locations that were selected for this project. And so this is a secured-in-place product that, like I said, instead of the slip lining. And then, Terrell, if you can go to the next slide. So we received four bids for this as well. The low bid was from SAC Construction at $126,459, which was 80.3% of the engineer's estimate. They're the ones that got the contract last year. The work shall be completed by October 30th of 2020 and there are liquidated damages in the amount of $300 per day in excess of that date. We are recommending approval.
Okay. At this time, we will ask members of the public to provide their questions or comments, either in favor or in opposition of this measure. You can do so electronically at this time. And I will ask the city clerk if she's received any comments prior to the meeting.
I did not receive any comments prior to the meeting and I do not see any being entered right now.
Okay, and Mr. Barcalo, did you receive any comments? I didn't ask you on the prior one. I assume you would have mentioned them if you did.
No, we have not.
Okay. Okay, so we'll note that for the record. We have a few more seconds here for people to, a little bit more time for people to send in their question if they have one. We have a few more uh seconds here for people to um, a little bit more time for people to send in their question if they have one. Okay, I'm assuming that no, no more questions have come in.
Correct.
Okay, we will uh then close the public hearing and go to the resolution, Ms. Atkins.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight three seven six, accepting bid and awarding contract to S A K Construction, Terry. See, one hundred twenty-six four hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, moved by council member Atkins, seconded by council member Sternath, to approve resolution number two eight three seven six, accepting bids and awarding contract to S A K Construction LLC regarding the twenty twenty Cemetery C I P P Rehabilitations Project, which is the slip lining project in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Discussion? So is this one where you would add to the project, uh, Mr. Barcalo, or not?
Um, because of our current situation, public service is not televising sewer because of the potential issues with um contracting it, so we may not be able to add to this, so we would just ask for a carryover into a larger project next year.
Okay. Any uh questions for Mr. Barcalo on this uh, on this matter? Okay, seeing that there are none, we'll vote, all those in favor of resolution number two eight three seven six, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, all um, all ayes, the motion is approved.
Mayor, I make the motion to approve resolution number two eight three seven seven, approving change order number three with Christner Contracting, Inc. Regarding the two thousand nineteen fire station project, regarding removal of A V system, spoils removal and winter conditions, in the amount of six thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight three seven seven, approving change order number three with Christner Contracting, Inc., regarding the twenty nineteen fire station project, regarding the removal of A V systems, spoils, removal and winter conditions in an amount of six thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Discussion? Mr. Barcalo, you might, do you mind just explaining that for people who are listening in with that?
Yeah, so the A V uh chief Krebel might have to give a little more information on that, but I'm assuming it's taking away the audio in the classroom of one, two, three, four um, the firefighters, the spoils removal are due to not knowing if the site was going to balance when we designed Irish Drive project, so there are extra piles of dirt there, and it was found later when it was um balanced, that it, that soil was not needed. The concrete blankets and the winter conditions, if you recall, they were thinking that that could be up to fifty thousand dollars in order to get the footings in, um, keep the frost out of the concrete and keep the project moving to the winter, so it was much less than what they, kind of the worst-case scenario, which is a good thing. Um, so with the, taking out the A V equipment and adding in the extra stuff, it's only a change of six thousand dollars. Um, so that's fairly good for such a large project.
Okay, thanks for that explanation, uh, any discussion from the council, questions? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight three seven seven, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any no's? Okay, so the ayes have it, the motion is approved. Councilmember Brandt?
Mayor, I make a motion directing staff to support the Lincoln Highway Heritage Byways application of National Scenic Byway designation.
It's been moved and seconded to uh direct staff to support the Lincoln Highway Heritage Byways application of the National Scenic Byway. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved, councilmember Goodell?
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight three seven eight, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the twenty nineteen Fourteenth Street Reconstruction Project, N S I, in the amount of eight hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight three seven eight, approving the contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the twenty nineteen Fourteenth Street Reconstruction Project in the amount of eight hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. Discussion? Any questions for the city engineer? Okay, we'll vote, all those in favor of resolution number two eight three seven eight, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved, councilmembers Sternath?
This mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight three seven nine, approving the contract and bond with Midwest Concrete Incorporated regarding the twenty twenty storm sewer project in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight three seven nine, approving the contract and bond with Midwest Concrete, Inc., regarding the twenty twenty storm sewer project in the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two eight three seven nine, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Was that an aye? Yes, okay, all those opposed, please say no. Okay, none opposed, so the motion is approved. Councilmember Bradkins?
I'm having trouble with my uh internet, so hopefully I don't jump back out any while.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight three eight zero, approving a con- tra- act with Calhoun Burns and Associates Inspection Services in the amount of four thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight three eight zero, approving a contract with Calhoun Burns and Associates, Inc., regarding the twenty twenty Bridge Inspection Services in the amount of four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight three eight zero, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved. Councilmember Jensen?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve project calendar regarding the two thousand twenty Fire Station Two Parking Lot Reconstruction Project as follows. This will include a motion to retain the city engineer as project engineer and will also include resolution numbers two eight three eight one, two eight three eight two, and two eight three eight three.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the twenty twenty Fire Station Two Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. This includes um a motion to retain the city engineer as well as resolutions two eight three eight one, two eight three eight two, and two eight three eight three. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Uh, yes, Mr. Jensen?
Uh, my question is, what was, what is the current thickness of that parking lot and what will be the new thickness?
So the existing thickness is four inches on dirt.
On dirt, right?
When the new aerial was purchased, um, they had a few issues out there. As you can see in the diagram, we actually have different thicknesses, so the ten inch is right next to the structure where there'll be more of a bouncing because they're either entering or exiting the the threshold of the building, and there's, there's usually a little bit of a lip there, the rest of it is eight inches, and then you have six inches of rock underneath that as well.
Okay, glad to hear us being constructed properly this time.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, for some reason, my blue box, it didn't show up, I just want to tell you that the engineer's preliminary construction estimate is two hundred and seventy-five thousand field bids we received on April twenty-eighth of twenty twenty and award potentially on May seventh. Um, work shall begin uh no later than July sixth and be completed within fifty working days, and there is five hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages.
Thank you for that. Any uh further discussion or questions from the council? We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion to approve the project calendar for the twenty twenty Fire Station Two Parking Lot Reconstruction Project, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion has been approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight three eight four, approving a contract with Stan- Stanley Consultants Incorporated for a soil mitigation plan for the Central Corridor project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight three eight four, approving a contract with Stanley Consultants, Inc., for a soil mitigation plan for the Central Corridor project. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight three eight four, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, all those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion has been approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight three eight five, approving a contract with Braun InterTech Corporation for quality assurance, E C plant monitoring and soil testing for the C Mar Phase One and C Mar Phase Three projects in the amount of twelve thousand thirty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight three eight five, approving a contact with Braun InterTech Corporation for quality assurance, E C C plant monitoring and soil testing for the C Mar Phase One and C Mar Phase Three projects in a total amount of twelve thousand thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Discussion? Questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight three eight five, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. Uh, for the next three items, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem, Mr. Jensen.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number two eight three eight six, approving the contract and bond with Peterson Contractors, Incorporated regarding the C Mar Phase Three project in the city of Marion, from Marion Boulevard Bridge over Indian Creek North Preservation Preservation of Trail Bridge over the Indian Creek Bridge, new steel girder in the amount of one million six hundred eighty-four thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second.
Okay, thank you, we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight three eight six regarding the trail system, uh, Mike, could you give us an update on this, please?
Yeah, so you guys have previously held a public hearing and awarded the contract to Peterson Contractors. This is the bridge where they're going to take it down and rebuild it with the railroad theme. Um, work shall commence no later than July thirteenth of twenty twenty and be completed within a hundred and fifty working days. Um, that is a lot of days, but it takes a lot of work to do this type of project, and then there are liquidated damages in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars per day.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any comments or discussion from the city council? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of resolution number two eight three eight six, please say aye.
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 All those in fa- against, all those opposed, please say no. Okay, the resolution passes with five ayes and one abstention.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight three eight seven, approving change order number seven with L L Pelling Company, Incorporated regarding the twenty nineteen runway seventeen thirty-five reconstruction project regarding the cement-treated subbase cement content in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight three eight seven regarding a change order for the runway. Mike, do you have any comments about this one?
Yeah, so to give you a little background, when we originally did the design for it, um, the F A A recommends a cement-treated subgrade somewhere between the three and five percent. At the time, it was chosen to go with the lower of that range. Um, because of the wet conditions that we've had out there in the fall and still here in the spring, um, the, if we only were to put the three percent cement treated in there, it would basically just dry the soil, and we would just have regular soil, and it wouldn't add any extra strength to it. Um, so the contractor actually did additional testing, and they're recommending that they go up to the four percent longevity of the airport um, with the H M A surface um because of the high moisture content. They're okay doing the three percent if that's all that we're willing to do, but they are highly recommending the four percent. Um, and so with those added tests and that, we're willing, or we're recommending to add that additional sixteen thousand dollars um for the multi-million dollars that we're spending out there on the runway.
Oh, this seems very similar to some of the situations we've seen at the Fire Station Number One and the Y M C A where each of those entities had to spend extra money for the same purpose.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
Any further comments from the city council? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving resolution number two eight three eight seven regarding the change order for the airport runway, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, resolution number two eight three eight seven is approved with five ayes and one abstention.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number two eight three eight eight, approving concurrence with developer agreement with Genesis Equities and abode construction associated with the twenty twenty Central Corridor Improvement Project Phase Four, Nineteenth Street to Twenty-Sixth Street for clearing and grubbing in the amount of sixty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars.
Thank you, we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight three eight eight regarding a change order for the Central Corridor, uh, your comments, Mike?
Yep, so this is the phase four, so this is from nineteenth to the roundabout at Marion Iron. Um, we don't have everything updated as far as the updates to the developers' agreement, but we want to get started now that spring has arrived. So what this is going to allow us to do is clearing and grubbing is is taking down the trees that are in the way, and that way we can get an accurate number on our soil so that we can start with that soil mitigation plan that was previously approved, so that we can get that taken care of with the contaminations that are in that. So you can see the clearing and grubbing item, there's silt fence that's to keep the soil on the site, there's survey to stake things out, mobilization is to move equipment in, and then removing railroad rails and ties that are found when we start taking those trees out. So it's just the beginning of it, there'll be a separate contract that comes before city council, that'll be for the entire section of paving and storm sewer and all that, this is just to get them started.
So on the clearing and grubbing, is this already an accurate number based upon an actual count of trees?
Yes.
That is along that path?
Yep.
Any other questions by the city council? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28388, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Resolution 28388 is approved with five ayes and one abstention. I'll pass the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We will move forward now with the community development part of the agenda. We have a public hearing regarding an amendment to section 176.50-12 of the Code of Ordinances. To allow veterinary office and animal hospital uses as a permitted use in the UTC dash one zoning district. Mr. Trey Harn, would you want to just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, the doctor Bach is requesting amendment to the code as identified to provide for a veterinary and and animal hospital to be permitted. He currently operates a business on Seventh Avenue, which is in which is a veterinarian clinic. And I under the when the properties were rezoned recently, it became a a non or a legal nonconforming use. But he's been there for 40 years and just feels like his uses is should be accommodated in that district. You know, as I had said when we did this amendment, we're not going to hit every use 100% correctly and appropriately. So staff did take a look at the the proposal to add that use back into the UTC one district. And you know, staff has reviewed the request to research typical office practices of veterinary office and animal hospitals. And determine that they operate in a manner similar to the medical clinic or urgent care facility that is currently permitted in that same district. The only noticeably difference is that there typically be an outdoor area for animals to relieve themselves and then. You know, staff to be there with the animals. So in addition to that, the the district already is generally associated with a heavy traffic. Area where there's noise and night operations are permitted, so it's not like there's a whole lot of difference in what's being provided for. In addition to that, there are some performance standards which I highlighted in the council's report, which include there has to be some outdoor exercise area, but it shouldn't be directed to any residentially zoned property and it should be. Behind a fence, animals can only be kept in an enclosed structure, they can't be kennelled on the outdoors. And then there's some hours of operation associated with it and then some and then the typical noise standards are in place. So this isn't like your typical or rezoning that you would see. This is just taking the code and amending the one of the uses and providing for a veterinary clinic.
That's an existing use in that location, so.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to be sure that was clear. Okay, any members of the public who have a comment or question on this public hearing? This is the time to send in your comments, please do so at this time electronically. While we wait for that, I'll ask the city clerk if we received any comments outside of this public hearing.
So I did receive an email ahead of time, I'll go ahead and read it. It is from Dr. Ryan Bach with Marion Animal Hospital.
Go ahead.
So he just says, I am the owner of Marion Animal Hospital 448 Seventh Avenue. I have been at this location for 15 years and this location has served as a veterinary clinic for more than 40. I feel that Marion Animal Hospital and businesses similar to mine have no detrimental effect on the neighboring residential district. Marion Animal Hospital is a veterinary clinic serving dogs and cats. All animals outside the building are walked on a leash or carried in a pet taxi. We are not an outdoor boarding facility and we have no outdoor runs. Our hours are standard business hours of 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday and 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturday. The reason I would want this amendment would be to allow me flexibility to expand my business or purchase a property in the zoning district that would allow my business to grow. I have enjoyed being in Marion and would appreciate the ability to grow my business more to help the people and pets of this area. Our long history in our current location makes this district of Marion desirable to us and our customers for any future growth.
Thank you. Mr. Trey Harn, did you receive any comments to your office outside this this meeting?
I did not, I I would like to point out that this this request was heard at the planning and zoning commission on February 11th. And there was a full recommendation for approval on this at that time.
Thank you. Okay, have we received any comments electronically?
No, no other comments have come in.
Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to the ordinance.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve ordinance number 20-05 approving the amendment to section 176.50-12. To allow veterinary office slash animal hospital as a permitted use in the UTC dash one zoning district. This is the initial consideration.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 20-05 approving the amendment of section 176.5-12 of the Code of Ordinances. To allow veterinary office animal hospital as a permitted use in the UTC dash one zoning district. This is the first consideration. Discussion, questions from the council? Yes, Ms. Gabriela?
Yeah, I have a couple of things here. I'd like to start by saying that I'm a dog lover and owner and so I appreciate vets, I'm glad to have them in our community. I do have some concerns about this particular approval that's in front of us. Mainly because I noticed he is grandfathered in, so there would be no if if this were voted down, it would not change anything that he's currently doing. But the language that we received in the detail in looking at this ordinance approving it would provide him the ability to expand operations and permit new practices. To be established in the zoning district. And so my concern is that should he want to grow and he mentioned in his letter that the clerk read in the public hearing. There could be a boarding kennel situation there that currently does not exist. So if we pass this, that would allow that. And in looking at where this is located, right on Seventh Avenue with a lot of residences behind kennels can be really loud. With dogs barking outside and so I I wonder about that. And then they also sometimes services can be offered for doggy daycares, et cetera. I just feel like the the current location for this in my mind is not what we're really doing in this corridor and. Tangential, I guess, property, so I don't I don't the the language in the approval with the ability to expand is what. And so I'll be voting no for it, I just kind of wanted to explain why. He is grandfathered in, so this doesn't impact him negatively, but I I just am thinking about the businesses that are around there, restaurants right across the street. And the residences behind him, should he want to expand unless there was a way that we could have it come forward specifically to have to approve it. And maybe I'm missing that piece of it, so I don't know, Tom, if you could answer if he wanted to add those kind of services, would he have to come back? Or does this ordinance permit him to do that since we would be changing the use a little bit?
But I think your your biggest concern is from what I'm understanding is the outdoor.
Yeah, that's my only concern, yes.
Yeah, and if you if you look at I item three, it does say all outdoor kennelings shall be limited to clinics located in manufacturing district. So I what they're basically saying is. In this area, it would not be permitted for outdoor.
So the language that talks about ability to expand operations and permit new practices. It would not allow a doggy daycare to be added to this, or I know that there are some runs, I believe that the that mentioned in his letter. I'm not really familiar with this, the current structure, but it couldn't be expanded upon to actually board animals there for longer periods.
They they could if they were indoor.
Okay, all right, I don't I don't have an issue with that then, so that that covers it and addresses my concern, thanks.
Thank you for clarifying that for everyone. Any additional questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Nick?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
The other question I had, I have the same question as Renee did, but am I also understanding this that I understand. That facility and Dr. Bach have been there for a long time. But with this change in the zoning, would that also allow additional veterinary offices to be located in the UTC one zoning district? So he's grandfathered, I understand that. It seems like that's all he needs if he's not going to expand it with an outside kennel, outside operations. But are we also then allowing additional vet offices to come into to come into this district, Tom?
We we would and you know, honestly, the if you look at what would normally be accommodated in an area like along Seventh Avenue. We have, we already have vet clinics and I don't think any of them have outdoor boarding that I'm that I'm aware of right offhand. So you know, by eliminating that, it does provide the opportunity for the clinics to exist, it just it does specifically prohibit the outdoor side, so. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, does that clear up your questions, Steve?
Yes.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the initial consideration of ordinance number 20-05, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion has been approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28389 approving an acquisition plat of a portion of property located at 2097 Sixth Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28389 approving an acquisition plat of a portion of property located at 2097 Sixth Avenue. Discussion? This is part of the central corridor project, Tom?
That is correct, yep.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28389, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion has been approved. Also, remember Atkins?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28390 approving a contract with HDR Engineering, Inc. Regarding engineering services associated with the 10th Avenue Side Pass Project from 35th Street to Eagleview Drive in Marion in the amount of $460,395.99.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28390 proving approving a contract with HDR Engineering, Inc. For engineering services associated with the 10th Avenue Side Pass Project from 35th Street to Eagleview Drive. Discussion? Okay, so this is for clarification for everyone, again, this is the sidewalk slash trail construction project along 151.
That that's correct, this is a part of a federal grant upon which 80% of the cost will be reimbursed to the city through the CNPL. And we went through a bidding process in the in the fall. And our selection process and HDR engineers was the preferred choice and is recommending to proceed.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor of resolution number 28390, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number 28391. Moving relocation assistance payment in the amount of $3,924.73. Robert Holochek located at 2245 Sixth Avenue associated with the central corridor project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28391 approving relocation assistance payments. In the amount of $3,924.73 to Robert Holochek located at 2245 Sixth Avenue in connection with the central corridor project. Discussion?
Your honor, if I could just make a statement, they so we've been trying to work with the folks that have that that we get relocated from the properties they acquire. Mr. Holochek was one of those individuals. This is this is a part, so this would be the first payment to him related to some moving expenses and then storage for his his belongings. When he was living at 2245, he has moved out, but he has not relocated to a new apartment or home. And so we will, there will be an additional payment to him related to housing differential payment. So we're working on housing, permanent housing for him at this point, so.
Okay, any discussion, questions? From the council? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28391, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28392 approving relocation assistance payment in the amount of $10,690.14 to DNL Construction. Justin Titlebach located at 597 21st Street associated with Central Corridor Project.
Again.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28392 approving relocation assistance payment in the amount of $10,690.14 to DNL Construction. Justin Titlebach. Located at 597 21st Street in connection with the central corridor project. Discussion, anything to add on that, Mr. Trey Harn?
Yes, I'd just like to point out that if you recall from the last agenda, we had a payment made to Stone Stone Gate. At the same address, so this is at 597 21st Street, there were three businesses in it. So this, so you're gonna, this is this is the first and only payment to Mr. Titlebach. We had a payment on the last time to on the last agenda to Stone Gate. You will see a payment to Mike Val, who was the owner of the property. At the next meeting as well as there was some storage in there. Of property owned by Bob Lacy, so there'll be a couple more payments relative to the tenants and and relocation of folks that were leasing space at 597. So I just want to let the council know that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion from the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Are all those in favor of resolution number 28392, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion has been approved. Moving on under library.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve ordinance number 20-04 amending chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances related to library board of trustees. This is the second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 20-04 amending chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the library board of trustees. And this amendment pertains to the number of members as well as the length of terms. So any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number 20-04, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed, please say no. The motion's approved. This, at this time, we typically have a department discussions for other 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 department discussions, and there's one item under that relating to the council member at large vacancy. Who will lead that discussion? Or is there a question from Mr. Jensen on that? I think you were the one that requested to have that on the agenda. So please proceed. You have the floor.
Right, Mike, I thought we should have some discussion. As long as, so we've got six candidates, obviously, for that seat. From a planning standpoint, I think we're certainly all hoping that the coronavirus situation will be a little bit more normal sometime in May. So from a planning standpoint, I'm proposing that we should consider moving that meeting out for those six candidates to interview them out to the May twenty first meeting to make that out as late as possible. Does that still fit within the hundred and twenty days we have to fill that? I haven't counted back on that, but we're going to consider that at the end of April. So I'm assuming if we push that out to the end of May, that'd still be a good time. I'm considering that from the standpoint, I'd rather be in the city council chambers, having the people all in front of us rather than doing it in the manner that we're holding this meeting today.
Okay.
Well, it was my understanding the suspension of the Iowa code was only for the length of the proclamation. So I'm not sure if we can extend it past that first meeting in May. That might be.
I thought we had a hundred and twenty days.
The proclamation just says it's suspended for the length of the proclamation. It doesn't give a number of days.
Right. Does City Manager want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, let us just put in a request to the governor's office on that and they can do. They had indicated in the initial one that if we needed more time, if this extended further beyond what we anticipated it would, that they would be happy to help us out.
Yeah, that was my recollection was that it was, the exception was made through the end of her declaration.
Oh, I see.
And that it could be extended if needed. So I think we would have to, if we have a consensus from the council that that's a good idea, then staff could reach out to the governor's office asking for the extension. I see that Councilmember Gadeela has a comment.
Yeah, I am. I'm glad that Steve brought this up. I completely concur and would much rather do this in person.
Okay, Mr. Brandt, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to also add that I would prefer to do it when we go back to regular council meetings and do it in person also.
Okay. Mr. Sternad, Ms. Atkins, any objection to that?
Absolutely support that direction, both for us and for the candidates as well.
Okay, Mrs. Sternad?
I would support waiting as well, Your Honor.
Okay, great. And same goes for me. So I think you have the direction of the council to at least put in the request to the governor's office and see what we can do.
Yep, absolutely.
One more thing on that, please, Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
Just wanted to add that I would like to have this as a discussion item prior to the selection. You know what I mean? We still had never kind of figured out exactly how it was going to go down. So just to note that whatever Thursday it falls on, that at the Tuesday work session that we have an agenda item to discuss the process.
Okay. We can do that. Okay, anything further on this item? From staff or council? All right. We typically have had a public comment section at the end of our regular meetings for any comments from members of the public. I think as of this format, we have dispensed with that in this meeting, but certainly the the members of the public can send in emails to us, to the council members, to staff, as well as, you know, call us. Our phone numbers are available on the website. So we're available for comments, to take comments and input at any time on any topic. And people are encouraged to do that. And also a reminder that we have, we are continuing our Saturday office hours, although not in person at the library. We, they are being done by phone and the the public is again able to call in between nine thirty and eleven thirty and reach a particular council member each Saturday with any questions or input. So at this time, if there's nothing else, we will proceed to council comments. Let's do this in an orderly way. I'll start with Councilmember Atkins.
Sure, a couple of things. I really was here the whole time. I had some internet challenges, which it's showing I'm having again. So I thought if I turned my video off, I might not get kicked out. So secondly, just to really want to ask, you all have been working your tails off and in particular, trying to help us get to this point today. So just really appreciate the work and and continue to stay safe, social distance, and we'll get on the other side of this.
Thank you. Mrs. Sternad?
I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jensen?
My comment is I understand why we have to do this. I'm certainly more of a face-to-face person. I enjoy being in the council chambers, much better. So I look forward to when that day comes again, hopefully in early May. But again, certainly appreciate everything that you've done, Mayor Nick, as well as everybody at City Hall and our fire, and we appreciate everybody's efforts, as do, I'm sure, all the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brandt?
Yeah, I just hope everyone stays safe and healthy. And again, thank you to everyone for all your hard work during these times.
Thank you. Ms. Gadeela?
I am redundant, but I really have to commend city staff and leaders, volunteers, and everyone for being proactive, compassionate, responsive. I'm I've been super proud and heartened by how the communities come together just from my limited view. I know there's so many things going on that I I'm not even aware of, but we really live in an awesome community. So I'm grateful for that. And yeah, I hope everyone stays safe and continues to follow the guidance. On a related note, I would just say that, you know, this is, this Zoom council meeting is interesting. But it has, you know, when I was compiling all of the different papers, because I didn't pick up my normal printout of everything, and I thought, okay, you know, we're going to get new tablets. I'm gonna try to do this a little differently. It's super helpful having this single deck that we can look look at tonight. And I'm hoping that once we are all back together in our newly arranged room with some new furniture and the almost eighty five thousand dollars of AV equipment, that we can have a single PowerPoint deck running instead of everybody having to kind of plug and feed in. I think that was probably some of the purpose of upgrading the the system. But when we receive the Friday packets, I know this is a bit more work, but if all of the the documents can be put into one email, for instance, today I was having to email all of this stuff to a different account to be able to pull it up to reference while we were on. And I just feel like if we can strive to make our process a little more seamless, you know, that we're finding a lot of innovation out in the world right now because we're forced to have to find other alternative matters. And I'm hoping we can build on some of these consolidation improvements from the the council process standpoint with, like I said, the deck and the the Friday packet of information. So if that's possible, I think that would be great. Otherwise, everyone stay safe and thanks.
Thank you. Well, for my part, I I just want to say I think this worked pretty well. I mean, it's not ideal, of course, but for our first time, it worked fairly well. I do, I want to add my thank you to all the staff for their patience and cooperation and collaboration. There's been amazing collaboration. And everyone finding ways that we can continue to operate and conduct the city's business in a very difficult time and, you know, under under not ideal circumstances. So thank you to everybody for jumping in and just doing what you can and doing what you're what you're able to do to to help us continue to serve the residents of Marion and provide provide the vital services that people depend on. I really do appreciate that. I want to thank the council members for also making themselves available, always saying yes when asked to help with something or in this situation, and people really being eager to do their part. I really appreciate that. Just to report a little bit, you know, this the city leadership team has a daily meeting so they can all stay connected enough to speed on what what's happening and they can stay on top of things. We also have a daily meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and Medco to, again, make sure that we're communicating on on things related to the economic situation and businesses and resources and what they are doing to guide businesses through this through this time period and provide them with the information and resources they're looking for. So there's a lot of coordination going on. We have daily briefings with with the regional entities. And, you know, this is a not a not an easy time, but we're going to get through it. And we will get through it because, as someone else mentioned, this is an awesome community and we have a lot of great people who have stepped forward and are doing wonderful things just just to be part of the solution. And that that's a very heartening thing. And our number one priority is to keep people safe, of course. And so we continue to ask people in the community to come together and to do what we need to do to help each other through this, to make sure that we're we're checking in on each other, even though physically we have to distance to check in on each other, to help each other, to make sure that we're being kind and compassionate. And following following the guidelines that the governor continues to reinforce, that our Lynn County Public Health Department continues to reinforce, and the CDC continues to 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 recommend. And so if we all follow those guidelines, you know, we can come through this more quickly. And looking very forward to to being back in the council chambers as soon as we can so that we can be back to normal. So thank you very much and have a great rest of the week. The meeting is now adjourned.